Okay, so this is likely to be kind of a fractured meeting. Let me tell you what we have in mind for the order of things. We're gonna do honor a couple of long-term employees. After that, we'll take a brief break and then start with a regular meeting. At the regular meeting, we're first going to have a public hearing on local law 2019A regarding the authorization for the property tax levy in excess of the limit established by the general municipal law. And we'll take action on that. After that, we'll have a public hearing on the budget, take action on that, and after that, it'll be a privilege of the floor. So there'll be three different times when people can speak, ask you to speak about the thing you want to at the time it's called.
There's three different sheets.
There are three different sheets in the back to sign up for doing that. So the first, why don't you do the roll call first?
Trusty Gray. Here. Trusty Solichuk.
Here.
Trusty Tiberio.
Here.
Trusty Rizah.
Here.
So before we do the recognition of the employees, I wanted to have a brief moment of silence. We lost two people in the last month related to the village. Molly Campbell was a longtime village resident on Wall Street, and he worked for the Saskatchewan Savings Bank when I started, working big shot. He was also a village trustee for a while, and a good man. The other one is Dick Gray, who was a village DPW employee for 45 years, so Andy can keep going. And if I, I didn't know him, I don't think, but he was a favorite of everybody, so just have a moment of silence for those two. Thank you. So to do the honoring, Andy Bonuski, can you come up? If a family wants to move around and take pictures or whatever, you're welcome to. It's no real formality here. So we have two different certificates. This one is from Nikon. They do that under 30 years. The one from the village says, or as Andy Bonuski has been working for the village of Scotia since March 20, 1989. Held a position of a labor equipment operator, water meter inspector, and for the last 15 years, working crew leader. Andy Bonuski, from his time as a water meter inspector, can still recall house addresses, meter locations, the owner had a dog, and whether you had to duck going into the basement and almost every house in the village. Andy Bonuski, as working crew leader, has been the public face of the Department of Public Works, interacting daily with residents, contractors, utility companies, and other village employees in a positive, professional manner. Whereas Andy Bonuski with vast knowledge, calm demeanor, and unwavering dedication, has proved himself as an invaluable village employee who exemplifies what Scotia's all about. But we recognize you for 30 years. Mr. Honner, can you come up, please? Ken wrote it, so. Dan has been a professional firefighter here for 20 years, and I've known him the whole time. I started, I don't know, almost 20 years before that, but he was also a volunteer for five years before that, so I've known him at that time, too. Whereas Daniel Jaywander is a first paramedic firefighter hired by the village of Scotia. Is promoted to lieutenant in 2006 and captain in 2009. Displayed sound leadership qualities and a strong presence on and off the fire ground. Dan has served as advanced life support coordinator, infection control officer, and currently is the department's municipal training officer. Many of our current programs and policies are due to his tireless devotion and knowledge. Dan has served as a dedicated and conscientious member of the executive board, including many years as president of the Scotia Permanent Firefighters Association. He made the department stronger with his infectious smile, genial personality, and embraced... I can't. And mentored both volunteer and career members, and respected by all. So the village of Scotia recognizes Daniel Jaywander. If you guys don't want to sit through the meeting, you're welcome to take off. Yeah, we'll just have a brief recess. So item number five is the public hearing for the local law 2019A. Does anybody like to speak for that? Ken?
You wouldn't go up?
The microphone there. You have to pick it up. We lost our mic stand somehow.
Hi, I'm Pamela Spicer, 210 Fifth Street in Scotia Village. Basically, my concern is over the 5% tax cap, tax increase proposed. We're already paying more taxes than Niskuna and for smaller area. And also, I don't think we have quite the... Look at Niskuna, look at the ability for them to pay the taxes that they're paying. Look at Scotia. We definitely have some professionals in this area, but we also have a lot of the working class, and we have a lot of the working core. I think to put the burden of rescuing our funds from the decisions that were made in the prior administration on the people who live here and work here, is it appropriate? I think that you need to find the measures in the budget to make up for the decisions that you've made in the past. In particular, it comes to my mind, the decision to try to open up a sewage plant that was known to be very well organized and very largely opposed. Had you proposed it downwind of our park and downwind of jumping jacks, perhaps that could have gone through in some way, shape, or form. But even knowing how many people were showing up month after month to protest it, funds were still spent on surveying and rainwater drops and looking for arrowheads, and that money was taken out of the fund. So we've gone from what, $3 million down to $1 million in our reserve fund? I think that is just, that's your burden to fix, not ours. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard? We now will close the public hearing on 2019A. Somebody would like to propose that?
We need a motion.
Okay. So can we have a motion to move that?
I'll enter the motion to adopt local law 2019A regarding authorization for the property tax levy in excess of the limit established in New York State general municipal law, section 3C.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Quick call roll.
Trusty Gray.
Yes.
Trusty Solichuk.
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio.
Yes.
Trusty Rizah.
Yes.
Mayor Kipper.
Item number five, public hearing having to do with 2018, 2019 proposed budget. Proposed budget? What's the word?
Twenty. Executive.
Executive budget. Oh, okay, so you've got...
That's wrong. I'm correcting you. You're correcting me.
Okay, so the 2019, 20, executive budget. Would you like to open the public hearing? We've got Loretta.
Good evening, I'm Loretta Ringney for 117 North Pole Street. Last week, I asked you the question of what is the long-term plan? And the answer that I got was, we don't know. We can't just hope that things are gonna get better. New York State will not make things better for us. They are gonna continue to squeeze us and squeeze us and squeeze us. And a large portion, we cannot control them, but we can control what we do here. But just hoping for the best is not gonna make it so. We have to decrease our spending. We cannot continue with business as usual in the village. Today, you just passed the 4.98% increase, and we still need to borrow a quarter of our fund balance just to make ends meet. Next year, if there are not changes, we are gonna be exactly back here again. And I don't know if it's gonna be just 4.98%. It could be 6%, it could be 7%. We have no idea, because again, there's no long-term plan. The village, as we currently know it, will not survive without strong leadership and a conservative fiscal plan that has to include decreased spending. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
My name is Dave Lindsay. I live at 14 Redcoats Drive in the village of Scotia.
Can you use the microphone?
Sure. This budget is disappointing on several levels. It reflects using the reserve funds for a number of years. It reflects the lack of effort to reach out for competitive bidding. Anybody who read the minutes from last year knows that competitive bidding was passed over in a number of instances. The new firehouse, now that we've been presented with a distressed budget, I believe the plan is to go forward with another proposal for a firehouse, which would really throw us into debt even farther. I just don't understand that when you know, or I'm assuming that you knew, that this day was coming, and I don't even, the tax cap, it's been called arbitrary or whatever, the bottom line is, when you spend more than you should, you're put in this position. And, I mean, to go out and, to have the expenses where they are right now, and go out and hire two of the most expensive employees that you can possibly have in addition to what you already have, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And then propose a firehouse. I mean, looking back, the sewage treatment plant's a great example, because you guys have these grandiose plans to spend huge amounts of money that we don't have. And I just, it just reflects a lack of creativity, a lack of leadership, and really to state that the village is built out is completely false. Is there a lot of open land to develop? No. But there's a new hotel, there's a new Cumberland Farms, there's a new CBS. These are all examples of creative entrepreneurial spirit that can make things happen, and I think we have a lack of that type of thinking. And I just think there's more work to be done to eliminate a lot of the spending that we have, but it also takes courage. And I think currently, we have a lack of courage.
Is there anybody else who'd like to be heard?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Okay.
My name's Tom Hardy. I live 117 North Pole Street. I'm opposed to this tax raise. I think there's a lot of other things that we could be doing to cut spending. I mean, nobody wants to lose services, but sometimes you gotta give a little to get a little. And, you know, there's a lot of other things that we could be doing, other than taking more money out of the village residents, especially when most of these residents don't even make their $30,000 a year. I mean, these people don't have 5% more to give you.
Exactly.
And I know I don't. And to be honest with you, I'm very, very seriously considering leaving Scotia. And I know a lot of other people that are right behind me. So you might wind up in a ghost town if you pull this off.
Ken?
Thank you for letting me speak a second time. I'm a daycare provider. I've had a small business for 22 years. The people I provide services to are on the daycare subsidy. They get a sliding scale. We build Saskatchewan County. The families that I take care of do not have another 5% to give you, and their rent is gonna go up because the property tax is going up, and the landlords. I see more and more rental properties and what used to be residential's. I see more and more lack of upkeep of housing because the landlords drop the ball and because the people who are renting here. Most of them are very, very good, but they are stressed. They're working 60 hours a week. I know, I'm working 60 hours a week. I am so angry, so angry at how out of touch you all seem to be. And I'm sick and tired of taking flak for being angry at you. You're all very nice. You're all very charming. You're all on a lot of clubs. You all put in a lot of time, and maybe you think it's your turn to run, and you think it's your turn to lead. I have not seen good leadership happening. I have very little faith that I'm gonna see some good leadership coming from you guys. I don't need nice guys. I need people who will do something different, because we're stuck. And I'm gonna tell you, I have a five-year plan. And my five-year plan is not to be in Scotia if you don't do something different. And that's a real shame, because my kids grew up here. I've had a business here for 22 years. We're married here. We've raised our family here. I have so many friends here. I don't wanna leave. But where the hell are we gonna be in five years if you don't stop this? Please hear that this is coming from my heart.
Please try to control your language, okay?
I'm sorry. Where the heck are we going to be in five years? And I'm asking that honestly. Because if you don't, if you don't make effective changes, if you don't get in touch with whom we are in the village, if you don't respect the fact that we're working our butts off just to make ends meet, and most of us are paycheck or two away from a real crisis on our hands. We don't have five more percent to give you, and we won't have any more next year or the year after that. We're not getting what we need from Saskatchewan County. Cuomo's taking stuff away from us. We need more, more reason to stay. Please give that to us.
Thank you. Anybody else who'd like to be heard?
Hi, my name is Maria Peterson. I live at 128 Riverside Ave here in the village. I just wanted to throw it out to everybody that if the village breaks the tax cap, I just wanted to remind the residents that you're not getting your tax rebate check for the village portion of your bill. I wasn't quite sure if everyone did that or not. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to be heard? Okay. Close the hearing on that. Can I have a motion for number six?
Oh, okay. So I wanted to try to provide a little bit of relief to the taxpayers on money we've already collected. I'm proposing that we take an additional $50,000 of our fund balance to offset the effect onto our village residents this year, which would lower the tax increase about 1% and still maintain all the services that we use. We use conservative estimates here in the village, so a $50,000 impact in the fund balance doesn't put us in distress, doesn't ruin our bond ratings, and it helps at least a little bit the village residents here. So I'm making that proposal, and I'd like to make a motion that we amend the executive budget to include that.
I'll second that motion. Well, so why don't you just move the, to introduce it with that amendment?
Okay. I think that's right. Yeah, I made a motion.
Okay, all right. So then make the vote on that.
So first, you're making the amendment, and then you're gonna vote on the budget.
Great. Quick call roll.
Trusty Gray. Yes. Trusty Solichuk.
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio.
Yes.
Trusty Rizah.
Yes.
Mayor Kipper.
Yes.
Now would be the motion to adopt.
Okay. Somebody care to make a motion?
I'd like to make the motion to adopt the revision to the...
Adopt the budget as a request.
To adopt the budget as a request.
I'll second that motion.
Call the roll.
Trusty Gray. Yes. Trusty Solichuk.
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio.
Yes.
Trusty Rizah.
Yes.
Mayor Kipper.
Yes.
I don't believe the, it is not true. I had to find out for myself. Do you still get a tax rebate check? It's the school.
It's related.
It's related all into the school taxes.
It's not related to the...
It's not related to the college taxes.
Not about, nothing about the village portion.
No, it used to be, but it's not anymore.
No, they changed the law.
One of the things they took away from us...
We do need to make changes, and I agree with you, but we're trying to do the best we can up here. We have very, very good department heads who gave us already really good budgets, so I wanna thank them for that as well. It makes it hard when they're making cuts on their own and getting by, and then to still have to put a tax increase in your fund balance. It's very hard when you need to make changes, but I just wanna applaud them for the hard work they put in during the budgetary process as well.
I agree with Tom. I mean, the budget we have is not real expensive. It's bare bones, and next year, matter of fact, in the next couple of months, we're gonna start off with figuring some new ideas that we could probably save the taxpayers' money. So we're gonna be working on that until, if we can.
Yeah, I think as far as I'm concerned, too, there's a lot of things that were said tonight that I have thought about at the same time, because I'm a village resident, and every decision I make is gonna affect me as well. So please know that there is support to look at things differently, to find more ways to increase revenue and reduce the take from me.
And your concerns are heard.
Very much so.
I concur. We've had many discussions about this budget, and we do hear the concerns. We have a great group, police, firemen, and DPW. I like to thank them, and they do a great job, and we'll do the best we can going forward.
Thank you. Item number seven, privilege of the floor. Anybody have anything to address the body in general nature? Chris, did you sign up?
My first privilege, floor of God, as a resident, but I just wanna tell you guys that I think you did the right thing tonight. You know, this country was founded on the idea that people don't wanna pay taxes, but each of us were, had been elected on the platform of keeping our services as they are, and that's what cost the money. So you guys took a look at things, were keeping our services. 5% sounds like a lot, but I hate to see Amsterdam, 9%. What's Paulson Spa gonna be, because they didn't address their needs before it got to be critical? And you guys have done that. So I understand the concerns of the people here, but I wanna congratulate you on what you did tonight, so thank you.
Anyone else? We now close privilege of the floor, and we'll move on to the rest of the agenda. Item number eight, can we have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the June 1 renewal of MVP?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number nine, can I have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the June 1 renewal of the MetLife dental plan?
I'll make the motion to renew my dental plan for the village of Scotia.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Number 10, can I have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract with Bass for tax bill preparation, amount not to exceed $1,400?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Zepplin, let's see that, purpose of that.
So they take the information from RPS, which is Real Property System, that Bill Portell, the assessor, uses, and they convert that data into our tax bills.
To a printed bill.
Into a printed bill, and they also provide the online portal for our collection.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 11, have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement with Madison overhead doors for the fire department door.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I would like to comment, sorry to interrupt, but I really think that was a great decision between you and the fire chief about going out there and looking at different options as far as gaining those repaired, so.
Thank you. I'll report on that in the mayor's comments, so just tell people who didn't know. Number 12, can I have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement with the logging Latin Financial Services for the courtroom copier?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
I'm staying.
Item 13, have a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement with the logging Latin Financial Services for the fire department copier.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
These are two copiers that just went off lease and are keeping going with the same schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm staying.
Item number 14, can we have a motion for secret determine for installing handicapped accessible ramps at various locations in the village? So this is having to do with our state CHIPS funds. We have to, before you pave the street, you have to make the corners handicapped accessible. So is it like 50?
That's what, that's what we're...
We're looking for around 50 intersections, or ramps.
This is for the money that we have from, that we have to transfer from the economic fund?
This is the community fund.
To Niskuna?
Yeah, so we need a motion to, it's a negative declaration, right? That the board of trustees here by determines that the proposed replacement of sidewalks is type 2 action under secret. Board of Trustees hereby determines that the proposed replacement of sidewalks is type 2 action under secret regulations, and therefore, this project is not an action subject to review under secret.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? Item 15, you're in for a real treat here. So... Read it again? Oh, that'd be nice. So, every year we have to read in full the MS4 Annual Report. And with any luck, you'll know by the end of it what it's about. Put glasses on, so I can actually do this.
What does, what does the MS stand for? Apologies for being the first to ask.
MS4 is Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. So, number one, public education. Stormwater pamphlets, handouts, and posters are available at the village clerk's office, DPW office, and building department office. The village water quality report postcard was sent to all residents and included a link to the village's MS4 program webpage. Three loosely pickup email was sent out in the fall. Four, the village handed out stormwater brochures at the fire department open house. Approximately 150 people attended the event. Number two, public involvement participations. Connected D County Water Quality Committee meetings, the village has represented at all 10 meetings each year. The MS4 Annual Report is posted on the village website. In the village clerk's office review and comment, 24,000 pet waste bags were utilized, including the 4th of July fireworks cleanup, the Collins Park and Freedom Park cleanup programs resulted in the collection of 128 bags of garbage. Number three, illicit discharge detection and elimination. Number one, all stormwater sewer outfalls have been mapped within the village. 11 were inspected for dry weather discharges to see if pollutants were being discharged, none were found. Two of the locations of storm sewer outfalls and catch basins are mapped and available for view on the Connected D County Internet Mapping System. Number five, construction site and post-construction control. During the programming year, there was one project requiring SWPPP review, which is Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. The village inspected three post-construction stormwater management practices that are owned by the village. Several times each year, maintenance was performed as needed, including mowing of the grassed areas. Number six, municipal operations. Nine of 16 village employees trained to implement best management practices in erosion and sediment control to avoid stormwater pollution in their duties in DPW garage and in their field operations. 56% of village's DPW building and code enforcement department, parks department staff were trained this year. During the past year, village streets were swept five times each for a total of 208 miles cleaned and approximately 10 acres of parking lots were swept. 25 catch basins were inspected and cleaned as necessary, approximately 5% of the system. Parks Department applied minimal amounts of fertilizer in village parks and on near Collins Lake to help combat high phosphorus levels. So, that is our report for the year. Hope you enjoyed that. Number 16, mayor's comments to the board. We've had a few things happen in the, this month has been pretty busy. We had, I went with Andrew today to a meeting of the county solar consortium where the village has signed an agreement with the county to participate. We basically put our utility bills in a pot, and they can take credits against those where the solar farms are putting in Connected D and Glenville and the Skewer, but there's no place to put them here. But we still get credit, and they have what they think is firm numbers now. They've taken our utility bills, and it looks like we're, in the first year, we're likely to get something in excess of $31,000 credit. So, this is basically, for not doing very much, it's gonna help us a lot. We will have, for next meeting, there will be an agreement similar to the one we had, we signed before, but we'll have the specifics in it, so they need us to vote on that next month. We mentioned a little bit about the fire department door. We got three estimates that our, the company that was maintaining it recommended that it be replaced. We got three estimates to replace it, having $7,000, $9,000, and $11,000 for the three different ones. The people who were maintaining it before were in the middle of that bunch. The lowest bidder came to look at it, and he said, "This doesn't need to be replaced. You can fix this." So, they came last week and fixed it, and he wanted to do a major fix, and we talked him into doing a fix that will work very well for quite a long time. So, we're very happy with that. The other item I heard today from Ken, that we received a grant for a gear dryer. All right, so our fire gear, the turnout clothes are required to be washed nowadays every time you're in a fire or twice a year, whichever comes first. We've had a rig of clothes hangers and fans and this stuff. We bought a washer for doing that, but the drying situation, especially in a wet month, was kind of weird. So, we have a grant for $5,000, Ken, for a gear dryer. It will be, they'll pay for all of it. We're gonna have to advance the money, but they'll get it back. So, that's pretty exciting. I think that's what I've got. Correspondence liaison special committee reports. Joe?
We had a Memorial Day meeting. Chris, when's the next meeting supposed to be?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow? And that seems to be moving forward. We have a lot of residents involved in it. We're thanking for that. The car show had the first meeting. We're moving ahead on that, putting things together. Freedom Park is, the meeting is forthcoming. As soon as we get the information, we're gonna be setting up the schedule and look at our financials, see how good shape we are in. I just want you to know the three new businesses that moved into the village. I got them to do a little article in Gazette, a nice article in Gazette about the coffee shop and the art gallery and the gift shop, and I like the, also the antique shop, if any of you have buddies that cross the street over there, it's got some beautiful stuff. And we want to keep these businesses going. The coffee shop has been doing very good, and I talk, I keep popping in and out of the businesses, and they're very pleased. The amount of people that go into their shops, so people are going in them, and we hope that that continues. The newspaper, matter of fact, I had an article in Gazette last week about the coffee shop, and I think I'm gonna try to get them to do one about the antique store too, so that seems to be helping them, so as far as they got.
Thank you. Tom?
We had probably the most well-attended bid meeting I've ever been to. There was almost 20 business owners at the bid meeting. If anybody's ever been to a bid meeting, now there's usually about four or five people. It's the same four or five people. Probably the reason is we had the chairman of Metroplex, Ray Gillen, come and talk about the Grant facade program. And he's basically willing to put up any money for any business owner, even renter, who will do a 50-50 match up to almost $25,000 for anybody who wants to do their facade. He's hoping to get four or five businesses to jump on it this spring or summer, and then that way can keep the momentum going, put the pressure on some of the more distressed properties in the village to try to get their act together. There seem to be a few business owners there that were interested in, so I hope to see that go somewhere. They also have a bunch of new swag we're gonna see hit in the streets that say, "Go to Scotia," especially if you go to the concerts. They are going to be the title sponsor on opening night, which is June 17. It's gonna be the local high school jazz band, so encourage everybody. I also want to thank Maria for relating numbers with me and spending some extra time and hopefully putting a little bit of ease to the burden on our taxpayers. But kind of a temporary solution for this year, hopefully a more permanent one for next year. And if anybody else saw somewhere around Facebook, it was floating around that Scotia, the village of Scotia, New York is the number seven place in New York State to raise a family. And I attribute that probably to our great services we get. We have great parks. We have a very safe place with the police. We have permanent firefighters, which I don't think any other village in the state has their own paid fire department and beautiful parks and great streets. So, thank you, guys. That's all I have to report.
George?
Yeah, great to hear about the bid stuff, by the way, there. Pleased to hear that. I was privileged to go to the town traffic safety meeting along. We had a traffic safety meeting with our village this month. We had a great discussion about a lot of different things in both places. Kind of one of my pet projects I've taken on, it's been about a year and a half now, trying to make some changes over by the middle school as far as it's in the town right away, but it affects me because I drop my kid off there every morning, and I get a bit, a little bit nauseous driving over there as far as the way things are logistically set up. So, there was a commitment from the lieutenant to try and look at those and look at options and try and do a little bit of enforcement over there because there's people who just, you know, just don't even care about the signage. And so, that was good. Like Tom, or like Joe said, the parade meetings are great and happy to be involved with that, even on a little, on a small scale. Chris Kasperg is leading that this year, and hopefully we'll have a group of people that'll take it over for the next year. Had a great discussion with our Parks Department with Jim Marks about his concerns, his plans. He's working on a fairly sizable grant to do a lot of improvements over there as far as walkways are concerned and facilities. There's a little bit of the talk for doing some work to the ball fields, improving that, improving those backstops so the balls don't go out in the road like I've said many times, stop! But, so I was happy to hear that too. We had some really good discussions with an engineering firm regarding some improvements for the entryway here to the village and kind of a big picture as far as designs are concerned, so that's good. Hopefully, that'll come to fruition with a lot of hard work moving forward. And I'm looking over my notes. If anybody thinks I'm not paying attention, this is, everything I do lives here in some magical place called the cloud. And yeah, I think that's about it for last month. Really looking forward to, there was a lot, like we all know, there was a lot of discussion about this whole budget thing, and it was a tough decision for all of us. But hopefully, we will work towards that five-year plan for everybody that works for everybody involved and doesn't increase taxes.
George, that money that we got for the Parks Department, we worked with Skepti County, that's a $156,000 grant, and we could double the money on that, and we're in the process of applying for another grant, which actually gives double the money for over 150-some thousand more than the county gives. So, we're working on that too.
An interesting trend for the parks too. Over the course of the past 10 years, they have traditionally been the ones who have very gradually taken the hit as far as reducing their take from the budget. So, it'll be nice to kind of get some funding back into that and then try and stop that downward trend of, because he's been hit pretty hard over the past 10 years, and he always makes it work. So, lots of good things to come, so.
Kelly?
I had a nice talk with Andrew. We just signed the contract to purchase the streetlights from National Grid. Smart Walk will eventually do the replacements for the LED lights. We, the village, sent out an email on March 25th with regards to starting to pick up yard waste. That will be through April through December 5th. We also spoke about Don Shannon. He'll be starting in April, and he'll be sending notices to residents with residents who have high grass on their residential properties. And the DPW is also starting to prepare for spring and summer. The, there would be a lot of paving going on in the village, notably Sealy Street, North Toll, and Sunnyside, and some other streets. And I think that's about it.
Thank you. Item number 18 is departmental reports. Can we have a motion to accept them?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 19, item claims. Can I have a motion to pay the bills? Okay.
Should I pay the bills?
I'll second.
Colerall?
Trusty Gray? Yes. Trusty Solichak?
Yes.
Trusty Tiberio?
Yes.
Yes.
Item number 20, can I have a motion to approve amendments to the February 13 regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 13 regular meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 22, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 18 special meeting?
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 23, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 26 special meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item 24, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 2 special meeting?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Does anybody have any new business?
Just gotta ask the mayor, did you not know that that roadway we were talking, discussing about the other day?
I did not.
And the side of the road where the, that storm sewer is caving in? I wonder if we can get old DOT to have them pull and take a look at that, see if they can do something.
I will look at it tomorrow, because I have to go to the school anyway.
Okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else? I've got a, we sent this around by email, but the Capitol EAP, the agreement to, for the, what is it called?
Employee Assistance Program.
The Employee Assistance Program. If employee of the village or any of us or volunteers, whatever, has a problem, these guys help. They're very good, but we have a contract with them that needs to be renewed every year, and if it didn't get it to the minute, so. Can I have a motion to approve the, to have the mayor sign the services agreement with Capitol EAP on the same terms as last year?
I'll make the motion to have the mayor sign the agreement with Capitol EAP as the same terms as last year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I got one piece of new business.
I'm sorry.
I'm thinking spring. I'm a blue collar guy. I don't like wearing the monkey suit. So, I propose that for our main meeting, we adopt the summer close policy. I'll make a motion for that.
Yeah, I don't think that's something, that's not something to vote on. We'll stipulate, okay? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So be it. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
If they opposed, cut the microphone here, now.